Alrighty, I think we have a quorum. So this is Oliver Olson, Chair of the State Board of Education. I am going to call the meeting to order at 8:02. Today is Wednesday, March 9th. This is a special meeting of the State Board of Education. We have really just two items on the agenda. We have some time for public comment and then really then the only other agenda item is to review and approve a final draft of our proposed changes to Rule Series 2200 and to send those on to LCAR. So with that, Susannah Maureen, if you would be so kind as to call the roll.
Good morning, everyone. Kim Gleason?
Here, and I'm still, I had a problem with video on Teams two days ago and I'm still working on it this morning, so I'm sorry.
Thank you. Lyle Jepson?
Present.
Jenna O'Farrell?
Present.
Tammy Colby?
Present.
Jennifer Samuelson?
Here.
Patrick Brown?
Present.
Tom Lovett?
Here.
Alita Peña? Gabrielle Lucci? Dan French?
Morning for now. I just want to say good morning, but also alert you, I'm gonna step out of two moments this morning to testify in a legislature.
And Oliver Olson?
Present.
That's it?
So we do have, we do have a few, we do have a slot for public comments, starting at 8:05 through 8:15. So we're now at 8:04. So at this time, I would ask if there are any members of the public who wish to address I'm not seeing anyone in the meeting. Just wanna make sure I haven't missed anybody.
I don't see anyone either.
And I know Megan Roy will have you, will invite you to speak during the main agenda item. So I think at this time, we'll move ahead to our main agenda item and then I'll circle back just before 8:15 in case there are any members of the public who wish to address the board. But I'm, at this time, I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing anyone. So with that, we'll, we'll move on to our main agenda item. And at this time, I'll ask Jennifer Samuelson to walk us through where we've been, where we've gotten to, and where we're going.
Alright, thank you, Oliver.
Good morning, Gabrielle.
Well, this has definitely been a long road, but we're here. And I think as we review the rules today, hopefully you guys will see and appreciate the work that this subcommittee has put into it, but particularly the information and the guidance that we've gotten from so many different constituents to really help us put our best product forward. So I mentioned yesterday in our subcommittee meeting, and I'll just say it again, I'm deeply appreciative of the time and effort that Kim and Tom and Emily have put in at our meetings to really think through issues, how to frame them, how to sort of prepare for them, and you know, really wordsmithing to try to get it right. So thank you, guys, and also for everyone who's been to our meetings. It's been really, really helpful, and I feel like it has been a very collaborative process. So without further ado, I just want to briefly bring everyone up to speed since our last full board meeting, and then I'm going to ask Megan to sort of, you know, start the timeline going forward. So we had our meeting in February with the full board. At that point, we made some changes to Rule 2229, which I think that it's fair to say this is where, at least in the recent past, all of the activity has been focused. So as a state board, we've made some additional changes to Rule 2229. We sent that back to the Act 173 Advisory Group for its consideration. They convened a special meeting on March 3rd. They made further changes, sent it back to the Rule 2200 Subcommittee, and the 2200 Subcommittee met both Monday and Tuesday yesterday for a total of about five hours, making further changes to Rule 2229 that we can go through. But I think I'm gonna stop there and let Megan sort of talk about the work that her advisory group has done. So, and let me just point out too, that Megan is taking time away from a conference to be here, so Megan, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jennifer. Good morning, everyone. And I'm gonna keep my camera off because I am not quite as ready for the day as the rest of you, so I'd rather keep it off. So I think Jennifer gave a pretty good summary. I had sent this State Board a short, or sent Oliver and Jennifer a very short summary, but as has been sort of the, the way it's gone with this process, the Subcommittee has actually had more conversation about that draft, and I was not at that. I do have a sense of where the Subcommittee landed, and I think Jennifer will, will share that. But I think in, in way of just summarizing the conversation of the advisory group at the special meeting last week, the group, we prompted that meeting with the charge to each member to make sure that they came prepared to share kind of their final opinion of the draft that they were considering, and that would include any changes that they were suggesting to the group. And so we had an opportunity to do that and hear from every member of the group, and there, there were the recommended changes that the Subcommittee looked at, Subcommittee meaning your State Board Subcommittee, the changes that we, the group provided to them. Some of them were small and relatively technical changes to language, and then there was a more substantive recommendation to strike language about other enrollment practices. And so the advisory group had a pretty lengthy conversation about that, and ultimately took action to endorse a draft that then went to the Subcommittee, and it made those changes. I'm happy to go into more detail, it's a little hard for me to know exactly what the State Board would like. But the other thing that I would point out is, one of the things that the advisory group uncovered is that there is an element or an issue, a situation, that these rules are silent on, that we did not have a recommendation for how to resolve that, but there, in these rules, there's a process by which a, an LEA and an independent school would seek dispute resolution if they were having trouble figuring out how services would be provided for a student on an IEP. And the rules don't give information about what's the status of the student while that resolution is happening. Current special education rules don't really apply in that situation because special ed rules, when a student is enrolled in a public school, compel the public, compel the child to stay in that public school, and we don't believe that could be applied to an independent school. So it's sort of an unresolved issue that we wanted to bring to the attention of the Subcommittee. I will pause there, I know there was some question about, or a desire to have a little bit more information about the context of the conversation and the discussion, but I, I don't know if that was also somewhat resolved in the Subcommittee meeting. So I'm happy to talk more or answer questions, whatever would be helpful.
Alright, thank you, Megan. And let me just say, and I realized as you were talking about the issue that the advisory group sort of unearthed, we did play with that a lot yesterday during our Subcommittee meeting, and we do have proposed language that we will get to, but I'll just forecast it now, it's in 2229.4B. So after our meeting, our Subcommittee meeting yesterday, Emily Simmons sent out what we're now referring to as Version 2, just so that we are like literally all on the same page. So you guys have Version 2, which incorporates all of the most recent changes as of the end of our Subcommittee meeting yesterday. So I think maybe what would make sense is to see if anyone on the State Board has any questions for Megan about the work of the advisory group, and then assuming not, I think what I'd like to do is just launch into the language of Rule 2229, since that is really the last rule that has substantively changed that, as a State Board, we should discuss. And then we can sort of move into, you know, globally discussing 2200 if anyone has any final remaining questions. So I don't know if any State Board members have any questions for Megan about the action taken by the advisory group.
I do, if I could, Jennifer.
Sure.
So, so thanks, Megan and Jennifer, for your work. So one thing, I just wanna make sure, Megan, that you, that the advisory group is, is clear on it, everybody's on the same page, because I, I've sensed that various points throughout this process, that there could be potentially a misunderstanding about the intent of Act 173 around this concept of open enrollment. 173, it was very specifically targeted at ensuring that students with special education services would be afforded the same opportunities as their, their non-disabled peers in independent schools accepting public tuition. And then on top of that, the Board, outside of the, the remit of 173, has layered on some additional protections around nondiscrimination beyond the scope of 173. But I wanna be, I wanna make sure that the advisory group is, is clear and everybody's on the same page, that this does not equate to sort of this concept of, of open enrollment. So I use the example of a ski academy, because I think it, I point on this, where, you know, a ski acad, you know, our ski academies, you know, they're, a core part of their mission is to train sort of Olympic-class athletes. And, you know, part of their admissions process is they're looking for competitive skiers and snowboarders, right? So in the situation where there are, there's a mix of students applying for a limited number of places at a ski academy, under the rules that we're working with and within the framework of Act 173, the intent is to ensure that students who are disabled, whether that's a physical disability or whether it's a learning disability, are afforded the same opportunity as their non-disabled peers. So you could be, for example, a really competitive skier with a, with a learning disability on an IEP, and you could have another student who's not disabled with sort of equivalent level of skiing abilities, both those students should be afforded a place. But a student, let's say a perfect, you know, straight A student with, with no IEP, who has limited interest in skiing, but whose parents are sort of pushing them into the program, the school still retains the ability to deny enrollment because the student doesn't fit the mission and the objectives of, of that program. So I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, that that's, that's the intent, that's what we're trying to accomplish here.
Yeah, thanks, Oliver. I think the term and the focus that the advisory group has used is nondiscriminatory enrollment on the basis of disability. And the specific conversation that we've had around enrollment policies and that that term, other enrollment policies, is those policy or are those policies that could potentially discriminate on basis of disability? And the examples, there's many, but the examples that have been discussed, some of them are having academic testing that's required in order to be, to enter the school. That could impact a student with a disability's ability to meet those processes. And so the language that, that we're proposing, that's actually in what the Subcommittee ultimately agreed with, is around publishing those enrollment policies and that those enrollment policies do not discriminate on the basis of disability and actually all, you know, other protected categories. And I would also say that there were several members of the advisory group that brought up the possibility that there is, there are students who potentially would require a ski academy to, there's adapted skiing, there's paralympic skiing, there are other situations where you would have to accommodate. So I think the advisory group's well aware of the, the focus on nondiscriminatory enrollment as opposed to this concept of open enrollment.
Okay, perfect, I appreciate that. I think we're, I think we're well-aligned then, so, okay, that was it for me.
Does anyone else have any questions for Megan?
We probably should just pause if, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanna pause at this point before we go on and just make sure that, to see if there are any members of the public who've joined, who wish to address the board, so we can close out our public comment session. I'm not hearing any members of the public who wish to address the board. Alrighty, so with that, we'll turn it over to Tammy.
I just wanted to say thank you to Megan and the Act 173 Committee, just sort of channeling what Jen, just Jennifer Samuelson said. I know that this has been a lot of work on their part, and I really appreciate their thoughtfulness in providing sort of good information and guidelines to us as we've gone through. And I, again, I just wanted to take a minute, because I know it's been just an incredible amount of work on Megan's part too, and I certainly appreciate the thought and care that she's put into this. So just taking a minute to echo Jennifer Samuelson here and thanking Megan and the Act 173 Working Group for all the work that they've put into doing for this.
Thank you, and I will convey that to the rest of the group.
Alright, anyone else? Alrighty, so Megan, thank you again for taking time out of the conference, you're welcome to stay, but if you need to leave, we certainly understand. And just to tag on to Tammy's comments, you know, the, the work that the Act 173 Advisory Group has done has really been enormous in terms of, you know, really, it's, I think it's easier to tweak language than it is perhaps to craft it in the first instance. And I think at every pass, as we've sort of sent the language back and forth from the Subcommittee to the advisory group, back to the Subcommittee, I mean, I think it's gotten better at every pass. So I really appreciate the work that everyone in the advisory group has done to get us to this point, so thank you very much. So I think at this point, what we can do is really jump into the meat of 2229 as it has been put forward in its final version and Version 2 that you guys got late last night. And Emily, maybe it would make sense to let you kind of walk everyone through the changes that were made.
I'd be happy to do so. I don't think I need to share my screen since everyone has the document, and we're really only talking about two page numbers within the Version 2 document. So you should first go to page 10. You'll notice on the bottom of page 9 is where you'll find the heading for this section, so it's Section 2229.1, Enrollment Requirements for Approved Independent Schools, Students and LEAs. Okay, the first section is A, and it is the first place where you will see a change consistent with the recommendation from the Act 173 Advisory Group. The Committee is recommending adding the word "publish" so that in A, where we're speaking about the written enrollment policy, the independent school publishes, maintains, and follows that written policy. Next, adding in subdivision 1, the word "that" is also recommended by the Act 173 Advisory Group, and the Committee agreed that helps with readability. Then the major substantive change appears in Section 3. You see the struck-through language that reads, "If the student satisfies the other special considerations or requirements of the school's enrollment policy, the school shall accept the student as a candidate for admission." The State Board Committee agreed to the Act 173 Advisory Group's recommendation to strike that language. You just heard Megan speak to that change. A further change you see, language underlined, "The school's process for making enrollment decisions when interest exceeds capacity." This is a new concept that the State Board Committee is recommending. This fits into the process when, and the Committee identified what they thought was a gap in the process, that all steps of the enrollment process for a particular student are to be nondiscriminatory. However, the Committee felt that it would be useful for this written enrollment policy to also include the method by which the school will make determinations when, for instance, the school has seven available spots and 10 applications that satisfy all the requirements for enrollment. Some further decision will need to be made. Without this language, it would be some process the school chooses that does not discriminate. With this language, it's still a process nondiscriminatory chosen by the school, but there's a level of transparency to the agency, to the State Board, to applicants, about how those decisions will be made. Those decisions won't always be made, there will be times when there are fewer applicants or exactly the same number of applicants as capacity. So the next change in 4, striking the words "candidates for admission," is to conform with the change above by striking the original language in 3. We leave behind the step in the process where someone is a candidate for admission, so the process has actually been slightly simplified. So now number 4 would read that "a student shall be accepted for enrollment in a nondiscriminatory manner," same language as the last time you saw this draft. However, the Committee is recommending to add the words "and" consistent with the school's written enrollment policy to the end of that sentence. The interest here is in being very clear, not leaving the rules silent on the process and how those considerations or requirements for the student's acceptance for enrollment that you see in 2, what role those play in the school's decision-making process. So the student is accepted for enrollment in a nondiscriminatory manner that is consistent with the school's own written enrollment policy. Then the final change in number 4 is a change recommended by the Act 173 Advisory Group to update the language in need of special education services to instead the more technical language eligible for special education or undergoing comprehensive evaluation for special Then the final change in this section, the point 1 section, is down in C. It's a clarification that when a publicly funded student is seeking enrollment mid-year, that the normal enrollment process listed in A 1 through 4 applies, and after that point is when the student is provisionally enrolled pending the process below in 2229.4. I'm gonna go ahead to 2229.4, 'cause there's one change there. So on page 12, note on the bottom of page 11, the heading, these are the, "Ensuring the Provision of Special Education Services to Publicly Funded Students in Approved Independent Schools." Top of page 12 is Section B. The language that was already here states, "The LEA and the approved independent school together with the student's IEP team shall work collaboratively to ensure the student's services are provided in accordance with state and federal law." A moment ago, you heard Megan Roy say that the rules were silent in the Act 173 Advisory Group's opinion about how students would attend school or where they would attend school when a dispute about delivering their services was ongoing. So the Committee yesterday adopted a recommendation that you add three sentences to this section. So first, it says, "Services shall be provided in a timely manner, beginning with the first day of the school year when possible." So that's a direction that is conditioned on when possible. Second, some intent language. It is the intent of the State Board that the LEA and the approved independent school will identify solutions that minimize the loss of instructional hours to the student. And then finally, that the AOE shall provide technical assistance to the LEA and the approved independent school upon request. So here, there was an understanding that the Committee might not have been able to identify a hard and fast solution for every case, but this place in the rule represents perhaps the most diverse set of facts that you might see in this enrollment process and is something that the state has not done before. So it's gonna be new practice, new learning, and the sentence about the AOE providing technical assistance was a recognition that there's gonna be a lot of work for the agency to do to share best practice, share new ideas about what's helping different LEAs and independent schools come to solutions for these students, and that there might be better practices identified for the next round of rulemaking that could be an amendment to this rule when we know more about how it works. Those are all the changes that the Committee voted to recommend yesterday.
So before we go any further, Megan, I think you have the draft and you hopefully just heard Emily's summary, I just wanted to check in with you to see if, if you have any major concerns with those, those changes.
No, I mean, I think they're, I mean, I think they're largely in alignment, I was listening mostly to the kind of status of the student, 'cause that was a piece I hadn't really focused on. I think it's probably as, as close as we can get, given, given the scenario of independent schools versus public schools. So I do think those are helpful additions, and so, yeah, thank you.
Great.
Does anyone have any questions about the amended language or, you know, Rule 2229 generally? Jenna? Oh. Jenna and then Emily.
Sorry, I'm gonna move here, give you a second. Um, I just have a question around the protected classes. This is typical language, because there's some omitted from this list, and it, I mean, I, you have other classifications protected, I didn't know if it was necessary or important to list out all the protected classes there.
Are you looking at 2229.1A4? I just wanna make sure that we're, okay. I believe, and Emily, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we took this language from the VSBA model policy.
We amended the language in the VSBA model policy to use the listed classes from the Public Accommodations Act. Jenna, which one is missing?
Well, I've looked at and seeing citizenship, veteran status, genetic information, medical, physical, mental disability. Those were the ones.
So we do have national origin, I think that's Vermont's term for citizenship status, it's a little broader than citizenship status.
They're listed separately when I Googled them.
Okay, so we, so yes, different states have different terms in their Public Accommodations Act. Many states, for instance, do not have gender identity, Vermont has had that, added that most recently. So this is the list in Vermont statute.
Oliver?
So Jenna, I also wanna point out, if you go to 2226.6, that, that addresses more, so there's the process, you know, we have to, the process requires nondiscriminatory enrollment, but before we even get But before we even get there, as part of the approval process, one of the other big changes that we've made with the rules is we've made it crystal clear that as a condition of approval, the school needs to comply with Vermont's Public Accommodations Act. We've always assumed that to be the case. And the Human Rights Commission is of the same view that the Public Accommodations Act applies to all independent schools. But for the avoidance of doubt, we put that in here. And I think it's important that rather than list out the specific protected classes, we reference the statute. And that way, if the legislature amends the statute, for example, and adds new protected classes, we automatically pull those in and the rules don't get out of sync. The other big change here I want to point out is the Public Accommodations Act. It says in all respects of a school's admissions and operations. But in addition to that, we've also brought in the scope the Fair Employment Practices Act, which also then protects the employees. Emily, anything else you want to add to that or correct if I have that wrong?
Jenna, does that answer your question? All right, Emily?
So the committee was given the opportunity to review everything again last night and send me, but not copy anyone else, so we wouldn't violate the Meetings Act, any edits. And I got several from you, Jennifer, that we're gonna discuss across the whole rule series. And I got one from Kim Gleason in 2229A.1A3. So this is the language that says the school's process for making enrollment decisions when interest exceeds capacity. Kim, you're perfectly capable of speaking this to yourself, but you did send it to me. So I said I would raise all of these. The suggestion is to clarify the process for decision-making when the number of applicants exceeds the school's capacity. So making the language a little more specific. The school's, I think it would say, process for making enrollment decisions when the number of applicants exceeds the school's capacity.
I just, I went to bed reading and woke up thinking through the lens of those who haven't been sitting with it for a long time and just thought that might better clarify what interest means. Because there could be lots of interests, but fewer applications. And really, the question is how they parse decisions around applications when they've got more applications than they have. But Tom, in your practice, and this is how we sort of arrived where we did, even with the broader statement, does that clarify?
Yeah, that does.
And I have no problem. So we're switching interest to applications?
Number of applicants.
Okay. So can you just read the sentence as amended, Emily?
So three, the school's process for making enrollment decisions when the number of applicants exceeds capacity.
All right. Does anyone else have any thoughts or comments on the change file? Is this about Kim's suggestion or is this something else I just want to?
It's about Kim's suggestion. I wonder if, not to get too in the weeds, but should we put and/or interest and/or applicants exceed? And I'm only going back to my parent tech ed days. I wouldn't want a school to say, oh, we've got a lot of applicants and we're not doing any more tours. Well, maybe they should have in there the ability for people to continue to do tours because maybe they want to apply next year. So I would hate to think that interest would be discouraged in some way.
I think what we're trying to capture here is what must be published in their enrollment policy. So it really is about how they'll ultimately make decisions, not whether or not they continue to cultivate interest, but what the policy must say. And so the occasion when capacity limitation is going to impact their decision is really based on the applicants, not those who are touring or otherwise. That's what this section is. I would, this section shouldn't discourage them doing anything. All it's saying is when you're going through your enrollment decision process, these are the factors that must be included in your policy. We're not saying how you have to do it. We're just saying you must say what it is so that every student, when capacity has been reached, there's, each institution may have a different set of rules, but at an institution, how they are going to handle applicants when they exceed capacity is uniformly applied to any applicant in excess of capacity. Does that make sense, while? I think it's just intent.
Yeah, thank you.
And if it's helpful for background in the original filing, I think it said on a first come, first served basis. And there had been some concern raised after the public comment period about that. And then as we sort of dissected it further, there was lack of clarity really in what that meant. And we felt this version of this section provided greater clarity.
Any other comments about Kim's suggestion? All right. Well, thank you, Kim. And then Emily, I'll turn it back to you. I think you're going to talk about my suggestions.
So I'm gonna actually, if it's okay, go through the document to call out some places that I would be more comfortable if they were on the record that they were changed because I don't want there to be any surprises. So let me start by saying the board, or reminding you that the board approved all responses to public comment at the January and February special meetings. And your approved or provisionally approved responses to public comment dictated every change in the draft before you from the draft as filed with ICAR. So if you look through the spreadsheet that we've been working off of, it gave me as the drafts person very specific instructions down to strike these words, insert these quoted words. So that was my set of instructions to walk through the document. So I thought there was need to call out a few of those so that it's very clear, so you can see how the instructions in the proposed responses to public comment translated into draft for just a few that are interesting. And then to point out two places where I'm suggesting a further change to more accurately align to those proposed responses.
Emily, I'm sorry, let me just interrupt. I'm really, we're sort of moving beyond Rule 2229, correct? So I think before we do that, I'm just going to take a step back. And were there any other questions about the language of 2229? Or is everyone comfortable with the changes? You know, I guess it would be version two with the amendment that we just worked through that was suggested by Kim. Because I think if we're good with 2229, then we'll jump to the spreadsheet with the public comment. But otherwise, if there are further questions about 2229, I think now would be the time to handle them. Okay, so 2229, I think we're good with. Thank you. And then Emily, back to the spreadsheet.
I'm gonna call out rule numbers and page numbers where that's helpful. I'm gonna go really slow so that everybody has time to get there in their draft. So I'm starting with the first page, right under the main heading of the document. So you'll recall that all along, the board has expressed its intention, direction, that some provisions go into effect immediately that are not directed by Act 173, which has a later effective date of July 1, 2023. So the committee and the board have adopted some more general changes that are not specific to the new enrollment provisions becoming effective in July 1, 2023, that the board wishes to take effect sooner because they will improve the implementation of nondiscriminatory practices and other improvements to the approval process. So I wanted to call out the mechanism by which that happens in rulemaking. That's the paragraph at the very top of the rule, laying all this out pursuant to Act 173 of 2018 as amended, these rules, and that means in general, take effect on July 1, 2023, except the following rules, which take effect on adoption. An adoption for rulemaking is after LCAR has given its approval and the rules have been filed in their final form with the Secretary of State and the 30-day period has passed. So that's going to be, say, in April, if we're just kind of looking forward. Those rules that take effect on adoption are the entirety of Rule 2223, which is titled procedure, the entirety of Rule 2224, which is titled reciprocity, the entirety of Rule 2226, application, and 2227, approval in its entirety, as you see it in this document.
Kim?
I just wanted to, I'm thinking about those schools that are up for approval now and the duration of that approval. So now there's an approval that doesn't require the ability to serve students with special needs or on IEPs for receipt of public funds, but that effective 2023 will be. So when approvals happen now, what happens then July 1, 2023? If approved without the same requirements to be able to serve students on IEPs?
There will have to be some additional process. The details of how that will be implemented aren't yet fully known. But there's gonna be.
But in understanding it right, it doesn't, the fact, because we'll be in the process. We've had a pent-up demand for approval and we want to be able to clear some of that demand. And then there may be some uniform process that catches those that wouldn't be up for reapproval July 1, 2023, but gives us an opportunity to addend or do something. Like, we don't have to address that in these rules, right? We just, they will need to be able to continue to receive public tuition July 1, 2023. We are looking then at the entirety of the rule and it could be revoked if they are not. We will have some way to affirm that they're allowed to continue to receive public dollars. Okay, great, thank you. I'm sorry, that didn't occur to me before.
So think of it as compliance with these listed rules must begin on adoption. Compliance with the non-listed rules must begin on July 1, 2023.
Perfect. And I'm sure process for implementation, we will figure it out before then.
Oliver.
But I think, you know, Emily and I have chatted about this before and Kim raises a really, you know, it's, it's an important consideration. So Tom, you know, I think this will be your committee as you start sort of processing the backlog. You know, there's going to be some education that goes with this, right? So, you know, schools need to start thinking about making some decisions about which lane they want to be in, right? Because you can either be in the approved or approved for, you know, public tuition. So, you know, schools essentially have a year to figure out what lane they want to be in. So I think it's going to be really important as you're processing these applications. And the same for the AOE staff who are kind of on the front lines of this. You know, there needs to be some education with, you know, the schools that are applying for renewals or new schools to understand this new world that they're entering.
And I'll just say too, that this really highlights the importance of getting these rules through completion. Because, you know, my understanding is that once these rules pass through LCAR, even the ones that don't take effect until July 1, 2023, that doesn't give the AOE an awful lot of time to work with these independent schools to get them up and ready so that on July 1, 2023, they will be, you know, ready to comply with the rules as adopted. So there's, you know, probably a 15-month period at best of working with the schools to make sure that they're in compliance by that date.
My next call out is on page six. In Rule 2224 titled reciprocity. I wanted to call this out because you have completed rulemaking, remember, with Donna on Rule Series 7000, which contains the list of recognized accrediting agencies. And it's been a little hard to understand how this rulemaking would complete the work begun in Rule Series 7000 and call out further work that will again be done to sunset that series of rules in 2024. So it's easier to understand, I hope, when you read the edits to this paragraph on reciprocity. So you see that the first change is adding one school in addition to the accrediting agencies that are listed in that rule. Jump to, you're recognizing the Association of Independent Schools in New England, which is ASME, the relatively new accreditor who you've reviewed. You are also stating in here that you shall continue to recognize all accreditors on the list in Rule 7320 until July 1, 2024. So that there's no hiding the ball here from anyone. You don't have to, as an accreditor, person interested in this issue, you don't need to have awareness to check a separate rule series to know that there is a sunset coming up for the existence of that list or the function of having a separate list. So here, at the end of the sentence, you say, and the New England Association of Schools and Colleges NEAS. That is to guard against the possibility that a future board might not prioritize going back to that, this rulemaking task before the sunset. We were concerned that this NEAS, which the vast, vast, vast majority of our independent schools in Vermont rely upon, might fall through the cracks. So adding NEAS here is really a belt and suspenders approach. It doesn't change any, it doesn't make any difference in which accreditors are recognized or not. It's just an insurance policy to make sure they don't accidentally fall off the list. Those are really the substantive changes in 2224. Okay. Next, I'm gonna go to Rule 2226. Beginning on page seven. Really, the change I wanted to show you is on page seven. So in 2226, which is application, in 2226.6, you'll see the language relating to compliance with statutory requirements for approved independent schools, including nondiscrimination. So here you are, first requiring, in terms of documentation of compliance, a statement of nondiscrimination posted on the school's website and in the school's application materials that is consistent with the Public Accommodations Act and the Fair Employment Practices Act. Second, an assurance with the school's application for approval or renewal signed by the head of school that the school does comply with the Public Accommodations Act in all aspects of the school's admissions and operations. And third is language that was, you see above, struck in the beginning of 2226.6, compliance with other requirements that apply to approved independent schools about facilities. So you have seen this language several times, but it's been in a pullout memo for me, for instance. I wanted to make sure that you knew where to find it within the actual rule itself.
Um, was there, Kim?
Thanks. Um, I just wanted to double-check only because S219 is moving. Um, I think that we wrote this to be, have sustainability beyond whatever might happen in S219. So I just wanted to sort of affirm that we did our best, I think, to do that and make sure that, Emily, you don't see anything that's changed that would complicate reference to these rules in 219 or referencing back and forth.
Right. So I'll remind everybody that the committee's drafting of this language was before this current legislative session. It predates S219 by six months or so. Um, that doesn't really matter, it's just an interesting point. So no, you don't quote the language of any of these statutes here, you reference them. I understand that they are being considered for amendments, so any amendments made by the General Assembly would then be incorporated because you've referenced just the, the citation.
And the specific one. I, I don't think, I don't think there are any substantive changes being proposed to the Public Accommodations Act, um, in terms of like additional new classes, but I believe that, you know, there's been some discussion about changes to the, the Fair Employment Practices Act. So, again, it's why it's really important to not try to enumerate things in rules, but to reference back to statutes so that those changes just get picked up.
So, next I'll have you look at page nine, which is within Rule 2227 titled Approval. This is the other bookend to the language you were just looking at. So in 2227.8, whereas in 2226, you had the requirement for an application, in 2227, you have the corresponding finding that the board makes. So the finding would be the school substantially complies with all statutory requirements for approved independent schools and the board's rules for approved independent schools, including nondiscrimination in admissions and operations, and then those requirements relative to facilities that predates this rulemaking. So this is where the rubber hits the red. Questions about that? Okay, staying on this page, you'll notice in 2227.12, we are adding a require, or you are adding a requirement, or finding that the board makes that the school complies with the requirements of 16 DSA 255, which relates to criminal record checks and checks of the Child Protection Registry and Vulnerable Adult Abuse, Neglect, and Exploitation Registry. This is not a new requirement, as you can see, it's already required by law, but it, the State Auditor's Report recommended that the state board add a finding on approval to ensure that you have kind of active oversight of those requirements. Then in the next 13, this is the mascot change that we discussed at the last meeting. Um, I'm proposing a cleanup change upon reflection to this section. So I'll tell you what's here and then explain why I think we should delete the end of the sentence. So this is a finding that applies only to schools that receive public tuition, and it is that the school complies with requirements concerning nondiscriminatory school branding. Those new requirements are anticipated to be passed by the General Assembly. They might not, if nothing was enacted this year, this amendment would have no effect because there would be no requirements concerning nondiscriminatory, discriminatory school branding. The current version of that legislation delegates to the Secretary of Education some determinations about compliance with the law. However, I realize that, and after discussions with Oliver, that might not be the final approved version, and I would not want your language to have a loophole in it, built into it, depending on what might pass. So I'd actually propose that the sentence end with the word branding and not adopt the language that says "as dictated by the secretary." It's not really necessary to have the same effect and it might be limiting in a way that you actually don't intend. Questions about that or objections to that?
So, so just to point that out, as an example, the legislature and the final analysis could pass a bill that, that directs the Vermont Principals Association or delegates to them to, to do that, right? Or some other entity, in which case our rules would be out of sync. So by broadening that provides some more flexibility, depending on where, where that legislation lands.
Kim and then Tammy?
Does it, um, what if nothing passes? What happens with that if it's referencing requirement?
There would be no requirements. And so no action at all would be, the fact that a school had not changed anything would be compliant with any requirements because they don't exist. So it would have no effect if nothing passes.
I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm happy to change the end of the sentence. I'm trying to think through if the intent, Oliver, I'm not sure, I'm just sort of looking to you, if, I'm suspecting something's going to pass. Um, I don't know if there's any other reference that is in line with our other nondiscriminatory, sort of an affirmation of mascot or something. I don't really know.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I mean, we can't predict what the legislate, what legislature will do. As a practical matter, um, the, there aren't any problematic mascots in the independent school world, so it's not, there isn't a problem to be solved, let's put it that way. This is really kind of a belt and suspenders thing in alignment with, you know, whatever passes in the legislature.
Thank you. Just, could you help me understand why we're limiting this provision to four schools that receive public tuition and not why it's all schools? And this may have something to do with placement in the rule, but if you can help me understand that, that would be great.
It actually has to do with First Amendment concerns. So there's a, there's a likelihood that a school that does not receive public funding could argue that the state cannot restrict its free speech and, and these symbols are considered speech. So it's the similar approach that the current legislation is taking as well.
And, and just to tack on to that, Tammy, I think one of the, I'll, I'll give you a, a practical example. So the language, because I sort of proposed some of the initial language to Senate Education, was around, you know, symbols that depict sort of groups of people. So you start getting, you know, a lot of the concern is around Indigenous people and symbols that represent Indigenous people. So there's lots of reference to symbols representing sort of cultures and people. So we tend to think about that through the lens of Indigenous people, but you can see very quickly how, for example, a, a, a religious school, a parochial school, might have some sort of a religious symbol. And this discussion actually came up in Senate Education, and that, that's where things would get a little problematic from a First Amendment perspective.
Um, just to follow up and maybe push back a little bit is, but if in fact this language is school complies with requirements, it means that statute would dictate the requirements and to whom those requirements apply. And this feels, right, consistent with how we've been approaching other sort of aspects of the rule, where we've deferred to statute either explicitly or implicitly, right? I, I wouldn't want to have something in here that overwrites what might be in statute. So if statute says it applies to all schools, then it should apply to all schools, whether or not they're, whether or not they're public tuition or not. So I, my, my preference would be to strike that initial language there, and if this is something that is contested in the courts, you know, then so be it. But I, I think that we need to leave this open and uniform to all schools.
I, I take your point, Tammy. I think maybe another way to approach this is to say, uh, you know, schools as directed by, you know, as directed by the General Assembly, and that way, you know, we leave it to however they frame it.
Well, I think this goes back to the concept, and Emily, I would really appreciate your thoughts on this, you know, this word requirements. And I think this is building on what Kim was saying, you know, from, from where are these requirements coming? And so perhaps the, the clarification here is to be more specific with respect to what we're, to what requirements are we referring? And then allow those requirements to take care of this, whether or not we are going to differentially apply this require, right, different, whether or not those requirements are differentially applied to, to schools of different types. But for the purposes of regulations, I think this should not, right, we've gone through all of this list of requirements and we get to the last one, and only the last one applies to public schools receiving tuition. I think we should be consistent, and if, in fact, the requirements which are put in place by the legislature want to limit that to public schools, that certainly is, falls within their purview. But my sense is that we should keep this a little bit more general and we should be, be very specific about, or as specific as we can at this point, about to what requirements we are referring.
So Emily, can we, um, maybe make this more general and just, you know, to Oliver's point, tie it back to the General Assembly and just leave it that broad?
Yep.
There's.
To say any, any school, any school branding requirements as directed by the General Assembly, full stop.
Emily, you were going to say?
Well, there's no reason to be so specific as required by the General Assembly. You can just say legal requirements, which would capture that. Okay, the school.
And drop, and drop the front.
The school complies with legal requirements concerning nondiscriminatory school branding.
Perfect.
Thank you, Emily, I really appreciate that.
Okay, so 2227.13 is going to read, "The school complies with legal requirements concerning nondiscriminatory school branding." Just as that.
Patrick, because it has his hand up, and then Kim.
That's what I was going to say.
I raised my hand, but you didn't see it, I mean, on the thing. So I do agree with that. It has to be very inclusive and you, you will not be able to capture it all, so I would just leave it as is. And so far, we've talked about mascots, but that's not it, that's not all that needs to be highlighted. It has to be much broader than that. And so just what you said now is perfect.
So just, so I'm clear, Patrick, you're agreeing with the amended language that I just recited?
Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Kim?
Sorry, I would agree with that. I just jotted in my notes state or federal requirements, which I think has the same impact as legal requirements, so, um, I was behind, sorry.
Emily, are you accepting, I'm just trying to track, right? So are we moving from federal to state or, I'm interested, Emily, I'm interested in your thoughts on that?
No, I think it is sufficient for the language to say 2227.13, "The school complies with legal requirements concerning nondiscriminatory school branding."
With legal being inclusive of federal and state law and regulation, et cetera, right, court cases, okay. Great, thank you. Because that would, that would invoke any, any court links, correct?
It would.
Okay, thank you.
Myle?
And does this become effective when, or would that be as determined by the legislature?
The rule itself is in 2227, one of the rules you're directing to take effect on adoption of this rule. If there is a lapse in between adoption and enactment by the General Assembly, it has no effect, as I was discussing with Kim a little earlier, it has no effect until there is a legal requirement enacted. So it might be that the effective date on any legislation that passes is July 1. And there's really nothing your rules could do about that gap in time between adoption of your rule and effective date of legislation.
Thank you.
Yeah, so what this rule does is it creates like a placeholder. So when that, any legislation that comes through or court cases, whatever, we've already created a place to require compliance with it, how, whatever it looks like. Patrick?
Would it be more effective to say, instead of just leaving it with branding, say branding and practices, because there could be branding if it's not, you know, they're two separate So I would add branding, branding and practices.
I don't really have any comment on that.
Could you give us an example, Patrick, of what you're thinking about?
So, um, if a school has a branding and then the practice is something else, you know, like protest and all of that, flag raising, and so that's different. A physical activity, marches. Yes.
I think that's addressed, the larger issue of practices is addressed earlier on in the rules on, around the, the not, the general sort of nondiscrimination requirements. And I can't remember exactly the exact wording, but it says, "in all aspects of operations."
Okay, that makes sense, okay, thank you.
Emily, could you maybe, I don't have, let me find it here. You know what I'm talking about, Emily?
The language is admissions and operations.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that cover it?
That clarifies, yes, thank you so much.
Moving on?
Okay, moving on. So this point is nowhere in the draft. So Jennifer uncovered last night that I made a mistake, and I think she uncovered several typographical mistakes, but one really substantive mistake. And it's that your response to public comment, I don't have the line number in front of me, but I'm going to find it, referred to the state board will add a requirement for schools receiving public funding to have a school records policy. And I totally missed that, and I apologize, I did not draft new language in acting that requirement and didn't know I missed it until pretty late last night when Jennifer finished her review, which I'm so thankful you did, Jennifer. So I needed to bring that to your attention and put it on new how to address. It was intended to be a requirement for schools that receive public funding only, because those are the schools that would have records that fall under, arguably under FERPA and the retention requirements for school records. There is not an open place in Rule 2229, which is the specific rules that are only for schools rece, receiving public funding. So we might need to do some renumbering to add this, and really obvious place to add this language has not presented itself to me this morning. And I'm sorry, I wish I had language ready to go to distribute to you to look at, but it corresponds to Comment 66, which generally spoke to the assured. And I'm sorry, I wish I had language ready to go to distribute to you to look at. But it corresponds to Comment 66, which generally spoke to the assurances that a school receiving public tuition is required to provide. So the proposed State Board response to that public comment read, "The rule does not require assurances from a school in 2229 related to providing services and appropriate delivery of services. In regard," the rule does, I'm sorry, the rule does require assurances from a school in Rule 2229, "related to providing services and appropriate delivery of services. In regard to provisions for record storage, maintenance, and upkeep upon closure, the State Board will amend the rule to require a policy for records in the event of the school's closure." And that's missing from this draft. It would be, I have two proposals while I have the floor. One would be to add to 2227, the findings on approval, Point 14, after the language we were just looking at, to put a requirement there that the school has adopted a records policy which provides for upkeep of the records upon the school's closure. Or I think the committee's original intention was for the language to go somewhere in the text of Rule 2229 so that it would not be unclear that this is a requirement for schools receiving public funding.
So and that's just, if we put it in 2227, it applies to all schools? And if we put it in 2229, it's only applying to approved independent schools that receive public tuition, correct?
I would recommend that you qualify it like my original draft of the mascot language with the words for a school that accepts public tuition. The main difference is that in Rule 2227, the requirement would go into effect on adoption. And by locating it in 2229, that rule has the later effective date in 2023.
I don't, that's the problem with putting it into 2227 with the qualifier. Kim, did you have your hand up, or?
I was just gonna say, as I looked through 2229, it didn't, by the time you get to the end of that and you would add something, you're really so far away from something like that, that I prefer the putting it as you discussed as the last Point 14 with the qualifier. And I guess, is it, is there, I don't know what happens now with approved independent schools if they close. What happens now?
There's no requirement for what happens now. I don't know what happens now.
Okay.
I've dealt with one school that closed and worked with the school districts that ever paid for a student to attend that school on a publicly funded basis. And those school districts have agreed to take those records, which is, from the agency's point of view, what makes sense. But it's not anywhere in statute or a rule right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Emily, do you have suggested language?
Do. I scrolled to the top to double check my consistency with defined terms. So let me finish typing it up so I don't read the same thing two different times.
And let me just ask, if we put it in 2227 and make a new sub-paragraph 14, that will apply to therapeutic independent schools as well?
Yes, it would. Thanks for being patient with me, fixing my own mistake, guys. Read my proposal to you. So it would be 2227.14. "For a school that is approved to receive public tuition, the school has adopted a policy on record maintenance and retention that at minimum provides for the disposition of student records in the event of the school's closure."
I think that's a good, or at least a really good starting point. But can you throw the language up in the chat, just so that we can see it?
Or maybe I should share my screen. I can zoom way, way, way in. Okay, we are looking here where I've just highlighted.
Looks good to me.
Kim, you have your hand raised?
I was just gonna check to see. I know we generally aren't interested in prescribing what that needs to be, just to be clear what it is. And I also heard Emily say that we generally believe that to be that those records would be returned to the LEA. I just wanna make sure that is, if there's really only one thing that we think is an appropriate disposition of the records, should we say it? Or if in experience and practice, there are multiple ways this may happen, we wanna leave it open.
The school could have a successor entity. One school closes and someone else opens a school on the same premises or with the same purpose. It would be nice, I think, from the LEA's perspective, if there were other alternatives to their automatically and always taking on any school's records that closes. It was a hardship for those, it is a hardship for those LEAs that I'm currently working with to take the records on.
Thanks, Emily. And that looks good to me. And it isn't something we want to or should have applied to all approved schools? Or can somebody just help me understand why we wouldn't want it applied to all?
My rationale is that a school that does not educate publicly funded students doesn't have the records of a student receiving a public education. And the interests that I'm familiar with and the requirements that I'm familiar with are those FERPA requirements. One of them is that a school maintains the student's permanent records, such as final transcript, permanently. And that's really important, you know, as you go throughout your life, sometimes you need those records in order to pursue new opportunities. That was why I suggested it be applied to schools that receive public tuition.
Patrick, and then Oliver?
I strongly believe we should have the word confidential inserted for the confidential disposition of student records. That confidential is so, so important, you know, legally and otherwise. Yeah, thanks.
Sorry, I was just adding it there so folks could see in context. I don't think there's any problem with adding that word from my perspective.
Oliver? And then Tom, I'd love to get your thoughts as well.
So I agree with Patrick's suggestion. I think that's a good addition. I also think that, I think we should include expanding this to all approved schools and not just limit it to ones accepting public tuition. And I think the analogy is, you know, we've had some experience with colleges. You know, and obviously, you know, a college isn't accepting, you know, public tuition. And we've had a deal with Burlington College and St. Joe the Pro, and I think maybe one other. So I think that that would be a good change.
Tom?
Yeah, those schools undergoing NEAS accreditation are asked to have this policy. I think it's just good practice. I don't see how how it would be a problem for any school to have an idea how it's maintaining its records and what they would do if they closed. So I think most schools have that.
I was, you can see that I've changed my screen. I was double checking for my own sort of public notice piece of mind. Your proposed comment, which is showing here on Line 66, Column G, I don't see that that's specified. This is what you already voted on. It did not specify that a school received public funding. So my thinking is that there's no, that this, the fact that the State Board was going to make this change has been put out to the public since at least January. And it was discussed at publicly warned committee meetings throughout the fall as well. So that's my thinking on your covered making that change even to all schools, not just publicly funded schools, at today's meeting.
So and Emily, you'll update the spreadsheet as well, just to reference new 2227.14?
I will, so that's updated when we present to LCAR.
Great. Any other thoughts or suggestions on this? Oh, Lyle, your hand is up.
We don't need any other qualifiers, like a timeframe or anything. We just assume all that would be in the policy itself.
Maybe an example would be helpful for me, Lyle?
Again, I'm thinking timeframe, that when they closed, can they just take as long as they want? Or do they need to make sure it happens expeditiously? And maybe that would be in the policy.
My assumption is that it would be in the record policy.
It would be a topic for the board's consideration on review of the application. It might be that, and Tom might have something to add from the NEAS practice. It might be something that we refine with round two of the rulemaking as well.
Yeah, I don't, you can specify a timeframe. You could use a qualifier, timely. But because of things that you mentioned, Emily, just in different cases, to set a specific timeframe in things like this is really hard sometimes. So to put in a qualifier, I don't, I don't think is a problem, but a timeframe would be a problem.
So timely and confidential disposition?
When a school closes, there's a lot of things that they'll need to take care of in a timely way. This being one of them.
Do folks see that changing?
I guess the reality is that at the end of the day, they're gonna be closed. So what are we gonna do to them? But putting it in there, I think it keeps it at the forefront.
Thanks. Any further comments on this subsection? All right, Emily, back to you.
That was really it. The next major rule is 2229, which we've already discussed at length and was, really represented a majority of the comments that were marked for me to complete follow-up drafting. So I think that's the end of the places I felt that I needed to go over with you all, but I also need to answer any of your questions about the entire draft.
Oliver?
Take myself off mute. So there's one other item I want to bring to the board's attention. I did send the draft of the rules to the Chair of the House and Senate Education Committee. I sent them over the weekend. I sent them sort of a status update of where we were at. I sent them a copy of the rules, the version one of the final draft, and to Legislative Council who reviewed. And Emily and I spoke last night. Emily spoke with Ledge Council, I think, yesterday evening. There is one item that Ledge Council flagged as potentially being non-conformant with Act 173. So Emily, if you wouldn't mind just going through that. It's not a major one, but it's one we should address and correct.
Thank you, Oliver. I said last night jokingly, I don't like group work, but now I have to take it back because you guys are saving me with this one. We talked last night, well after I had gone away from my desk for the day. So I actually did not make the change in the draft after emailing you. So let me do that one moment, and then I'll present my screen.
Yeah, well, Emily's doing that. It's important to, this is a good opportunity for us to correct something and so that when we bring these rules before LCAR, we don't run into a problem and then have to come back again, so.
As much as we love working on this, it might be nice to move on to other things.
Okay, so I'm showing you Rule 2229.4G, Page 12. This change is not reflected in the materials that you received yesterday afternoon. This is even more recent than that. So 2229.4 are the procedures for actually making sure those special education services are delivered to students attending approved independent schools as well as the dispute resolution process, if needed, between the LEA and the approved independent school. Sometimes they will call upon a hearing officer to determine the outcome of the dispute. The rule, there are three points in time that I need you to know about. The rule is filed by ICAR. The rule that you reviewed most recently, which incorporated changes from the Act 173 Advisory Groups subgroup, that was primarily Marilyn Mahusky and Melmore working on language, and then Act 173. So what you're seeing here is language struck, which is directing the hearing officer to determine whether the school can meet the student's special education needs, very generally. That language came out of that subgroup of the Act 173 group that made helpful rewrites to this entire process. It escaped my attention that there was some specific language from Act 173 that was struck as a result of that general reorg. And it's very important to capture what's highlighted in yellow. The words "is unable to provide the required IEP services due to an inability to retain qualified staff." Those words are taken directly from the text of Act 173 in the relevant section, which is talking about the wrong hearing officer. So, and it was really great that Legislative Council over at the General Assembly were able to flag this on a really quick review yesterday and bring it to our attention. So the recommendation is to switch from the struck-through language, cannot meet the student's special education needs, and instead to put the cannot meet the student's special education needs, and instead to put the languages filed by ICAR back in, which reads is unable to provide the required IEP services due to an inability to retain qualified staff. And the reason is that that, that language filed with ICAR from Act 173 is very specific. And the interim language that you had looked at is more general. And so that actually would be a violation of Act 173 to not go with the, the more specific and narrow direction from the General Assembly.
Does that affect F for the, for the reason even to go before hearing officer? Is it that specific of a, of a disagreement? Or could it be inadequate space or some other, some other restraint that they're, that they're talking about?
In F, I'm not recommending the change because the fact that there is a dispute that the two parties can't resolve means that they need the formal process to resolve dispute of going to the hearing officer. What G is really doing is giving the hearing officer their legal standard for their, their determination of that dispute. And so it might affect the, the very specific language in G might impact one party or the other's sort of strategy. They would never call it strategy because it's all in the best interest of kids, but they're thinking about the end game for this dispute and whether it will be to their advantage or disadvantage to involve the hearing officer. But I think F should stay the same because it generally describes the fact that there is impasse and very general conditions for that impasse.
Any other thoughts about this amended language? Great. All right. Well, thank you, Emily and Oliver. Oh, Tammy, you have your hand up.
I was just going to say, is there an opportunity, and this is maybe just a comment for Kim, is there an opportunity to bring this up? And the sort of our conversations that you're having around with the legislature around these issues to say, you know, that this is very specific, but that through these conversations with the Act 173 Working Group, this general language was, you know, the preferred and just sort of pass that back to them saying, you know, we made this change to be consistent. But, you know, through this negotiation process, there was sort of this consensus around the language being more general. I just wonder if it's worth just passing that feedback back to.
And I don't know if it was thoughtfully done that the 2200 Subcommittee adopted the more general language. I think, you know, my, my understanding is that the Act 173 subgroup that was comprised of, you know, Melmore, Marilyn Mahusky, Matt Forrest and Megan Roy, I think they sort of retooled the language and they may not have been cognizant of, you know, the original requirements of Act 173. So they changed the language. And then when it came to the Subcommittee, we weren't really focused on that. So, you know, we thought that they agreed on it, yay. But this just kind of ties it back. So personally, I have no issue with, you know, tying this back to the language of Act 173.
But I think Tammy's point is a good one that I can imagine situations that go beyond staffing that a hearing officer probably should consider. And so just to bring that up to the General Assembly, I think not just like we're going to do with other things. I don't think that's a bad idea.
Oliver, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, yeah. So let's, let's take that one, let's take that one offline and we can discuss at a future meeting, but I agree that makes sense to bring forward because I think that, I think everybody agrees that the more general language is probably better language, but that, that would require statutory change. So. And I, I'm not sure, Tammy, you mentioned Kim, but I, but Kim, Kim's on point on Chapter 11 stuff, which is not part of this.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Yeah.
That's okay. I think I would also agree that it, we just have a punch list of things that have come up that maybe we need to just point out. And I think on this, I wouldn't have any personal experience to know how in practice that change would be impactful in a student's placement. So I would think, you know, we can throw that back and ask when and if we get to a phase two, but ask the, the working, the Act 173 Working Group to point them to this change we made and then tell them we did so in alignment with the language in Act 173. And, and we could know whether or not it stays on the punch list of things we want to draw the, the legislature's attention to. I just, I just simply wouldn't, I don't have the experience to know. And it sounds like Tom may have some concerns. So good thoughts. Thanks.
Anything else on the subparagraph? All right. So I think at this point, Emily, did you have more things on your list or are we? All right. So I think at this point, we're sort of down to any global questions about the 2200 rule series, any other particular issues that have jumped out at anyone that we need to discuss before we proceed to a vote? Kim?
I'm just gonna point this out as another highlighted, and I think it will benefit from the attention of the legislature, the inconsistency for tuition to out of state programs. And I know it's being addressed through 219 right now. So I'm not suggesting that we can fix it in rule. We have it currently referring to Section 828, which is being looked at in the legislature and specifically through 219. And we actually have a place that also speaks about tuition for out of state programs in the rules. That seems to expect that they're approved to deliver services for special education services in their state. So we have, you know, we're doing our best to address it through the constraints of 828 in rule. What I think is really important for us to draw attention to is by virtue of 173, which sought to, I think, ensure the civil rights of all students to have equitable access to educational opportunities through the use of the public funds. And do so by virtue of approval of independent schools to receive public funds from Vermont. We've created two categories for in-state approval. And then for out of state currently through 828, there's no such, there's no such conditions on payment as it exists currently in 828. And there's no deference to ensuring that public tuition dollars paid out of state are to those institutions that could equitably accept students on IEPs or those who are not. And I have a strong conviction that the civil rights of our students don't end at the border and that a student, for instance, in an independent school should not be limited by their, their needs for special services through an IEP and to the list of schools they can choose from versus their peer at the same independent or same non-operating school for use of the public dollars. So I think we have an obligation to point out that inconsistency to the legislature. I think it's all the more important as we could find ourselves as a party to these contracts in the way that 219 is evolving. And I would be quite reluctant to be party to contracts that don't allow equitable access for all students, whether that be in-state or out-of-state. And that was the intent of 173. So I, I raise that. I think we have an obligation and our responsibilities as a state board to point that out. And we most certainly are being invited into the conversation by virtue of being a party to the contracts as suggested in 219.
Oliver?
So I just, you know, just as a general comment, coming back to the, the rules themselves, I, I, I really want to just thank everyone who's been involved in this process. Jennifer, I want to thank you for your, your leadership with the Subcommittee. Kim and Tom for, for your efforts. And, and all the, all the other stakeholders who've been involved, you know, the folks on the 173 Advisory Group. You know, there was a comment at our last meeting. Somebody commented that this has been a, a, a quote clunky process. And, and I would agree, it has been a clunky process, but it's been clunky in that it's been very inclusive of many, many different stakeholders, lots of different voices. And, and I think, you know, we've arrived at a really, at a really good place here. But I think the, you know, one person, you know, there, there are many people that I really want to thank for their efforts here, but one person I, I think is really truly the, the unsung hero here is, has been Emily. And Emily, I just want to, you know, personally thank you for everything that you've done for your patience with the cat herding that has gone on over the past, you know, well over a year now. This has been, you know, what a process, this phase of the process has been going on for well over a year and it, it, it takes the patience of a saint to really get us to this point. So I just want to thank you in particular, Emily, for, for your hard work on this.
That's very kind. Thank you.
Cool. So I think we're at a point, Emily or Jennifer, have we missed anything? Are we in a, in a place where we could perhaps move to considering a motion?
I, I think we have done everything that was on my list to accomplish today except for voting. So.
So when you vote, I think, and I'm prepared for Oliver and Jennifer, my idea of a motion, but I did it really late. So I'm not sure that you had time to check your email before the meeting. But I think the important step I wouldn't want you to forget is to delegate to someone to dot all the i's and cross all the t's on any typographical or non-substantive changes. And then to be authorized to file that LCAR paperwork and file with LCAR.
Yep. And represent the board at, at the LCAR hearing. Yeah. Jennifer, might you have a motion?
Sure. I will entertain a motion that the State Board adopt annotated Rule 2200, which reflects the responses to public comment approved by the Board at the January and February regular meetings with amendments to Rule 2227.13. I'm going to add in 2227.14. Rule 2229.1, Rule 2229.4. That actually incorporates our most recent changes, recommended by the 2200 Rules Committee and presented in today's meeting. And I would add in as further amended during today's meeting.
And you said entertain, but I, I think technically you, I know it was a little, you, you were lead, we were a bit informal that you were leading the discussion, but I, but since I'm in the chair, I'm going to treat that as you moving and I'll ask for someone to second that motion.
Second.
It's been seconded by Tom Lovett. Is there any discussion? And then Jennifer, if you wouldn't mind just restating.
Sure. I moved that the State Board adopt annotated Rule 2200, which reflects the responses to public comment approved by the Board at the January and February regular meetings with amendments to Rule 2227.13, Rule 2227.14, Rule 2229.1 and Rule 2229.4 as recommended by the 2200 Rules Committee and further amended at today's meeting and as presented. I feel like I'm missing something.
And, and you need the second part that delegates as well?
Well, I, that's a separate motion.
Can I just?
Okay, got it. Okay.
Can I just confirm, I'm sorry, that the annotated 2220, 2200 series? I'm not sure if Jennifer, you read what is the title of the new version? Or the, because we have a filed annotated version and I wouldn't want there to be confusion, not among us sitting here about what we've approved. But I don't, I don't remember if there's like a final version or if we want to call it something because filed and showing up on the website, there is an annotated version of 2200 as filed by, with ICAR. What do you think, Emily?
I believe Jennifer's motion said, which incorporates the responses to public comment.
Okay, and that's the title. Okay.
All the documents have the same title, unfortunately.
Do we, okay. I did, I'm not confused at all about what we're approving. And the document I recall I thought had it in its title to like, which incorporates public comment or something. You know, version two. Maureen says version two. How about version two? I like that idea.
No, those are only file names. These really, truthfully, they are the Rule Series 2200 annotated. That's what you've been looking at. Which incorporates your responses to public comment.
So, and I think the way to think about it maybe is that there is one annotated version that keeps getting updated. So what we're left with today at the end of today's meeting is going to be the annotated version in its, well, almost final form.
I was just, because we go on to call out the four sections that we amended today. We amended lots of sections between the filing and now. So I'm completely clear what we're approving.
And I think just to play back Emily's point, I think the fact that we're referring to a version that was, is responsive to public comment, that clearly differentiates between what was filed with ICAR.
Do you want me to read the motion one more time?
I think we're good.
Okay. Is there a second?
Tom had already seconded the motion. So is there any other discussion? All righty. Hearing non at this time, Maureen, would you call the roll, please?
Thank you. Jenna O'Farrell?
Yes.
Jennifer Samuelson?
Yes.
Tammy Colby?
Yes.
Tom Lovett?
Yes.
Tim Gleason?
Yes.
Patrick Brown?
Oh, I think Patrick dropped out just beforehand, so we'll hold it open. Hopefully he'll join.
Okay. Lyle Jupson?
Yes.
Oliver Olson?
Yes.
Dan French on here? Oh, there is.
He doesn't vote.
Sorry. Patrick back yet?
No.
Seven in favor.
Okay. And, and Helita's not here today and Patrick. We'll wait another moment here to see if Patrick rejoins. So, okay. Well, it, it appears that the motion has passed unanimously. Congratulations, Jennifer and Kim and Tom. Again, great work. Really appreciate everything that you've done. So that, I think, oh, sorry, Jennifer, yes. So that, I think, oh, sorry, Jennifer, yes.
I, I have my further motion.
Oh, thank you. Yes, yes.
All right. I further move that the State Board delegate to the 2200 Committee Chair the task of working with AOE staff to file the rule with LCAR, give permission to the Committee Chair to authorize non-substantive edits to produce the final proofread draft prior to filing and appear with AOE staff before LCAR edits March 2022 meeting.
If I could suggest a friendly amendment?
Yes, please.
I would limit it to the March 30th meeting in case they.
Push it out.
If you could perhaps restate that, not limiting yourself to March 30th, in case they move the dates on you.
Perfect. Thank you. I move that the State Board delegate to the 2200 Committee Chair the task of working with AOE staff to file the rule with LCAR, give permission to the Committee Chair to authorize non-substantive edits to produce the final proofread draft prior to filing and appear with AOE staff on behalf of the State Board of Ed at the LCAR hearing with a date to be determined.
Is, is there a second to the motion? Kim, is that a second?
Yeah.
Excellent. Is there, oh, and I see Patrick's returned. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. We'll do a, if you could call the roll on this one as well.
Tim Gleason?
Sorry, yes.
Lyle Jupson?
Yes.
Jenna O'Farrell?
Yes.
Tammy Colby?
Yes.
Jennifer Samuelson?
Yes.
Patrick Brown?
Yes.
Tom Lovett?
Yes.
Al Rolson?
Yes.
Eight zero.
Excellent. Motion carries unanimously. Patrick, I know you, we lost you momentarily when we were voting on the previous motion was, which was the approval of the rules. So absent objection, I would offer you the opportunity to cast your vote on the, the original motion.
Approved, yes.
Excellent.
Thank you. And thanks for that added opportunity, the special opportunity.
Excellent. Wonderful. So I think with those two motions, I'll, I'll declare those two motions approved. I think that concludes our business for the day. Excellent. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will so move, but I just want to thank everyone again and thank you for coming to today's special meeting. I think, you know, we, it's nice to be at this point. So it feels like a celebratory moment and I think we've really done good work to affect the intent of Act 173 and actually take the opportunity to go above and beyond. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
It's been moved to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Patrick. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? All righty. We stand in adjournment. Thank you. And again, thanks and congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice that it's not four o'clock or whatever we thought it would be. Have a great day, everybody.
Too.